I call the November 17, 2020 regular meeting of council to order. Councilperson Donovan will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with the continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Let the leaders see the flag, the United States of America, into the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
The minutes of the November 4, 2020 work session have been approved. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
The minutes of the November 4, 2020 work session have been approved. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
The minutes of the November 4, 2020 work session have been approved. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
The minutes of the November 4, 2020 work session have been approved. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
The minutes of the November 4, 2020 regular meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 20-0-085.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this ordinance does three different things. Firstly, it approves permanent cash transfers from the city's general fund, primarily made up of the one quarter's worth of self-funded medical claim premiums. Secondly, and then there are three other fund transfers related to primarily city share of capital project funds. And then, secondly, the temporary approval of cash advances out of the city's general fund to cover both the special bond retirement fund debt payment that is coming due, amortize the amphitheater funding over the 10-year period I believe he used, also amortize the Springbrook Fund, $1 million advance, and the Tyler Boulevard resurfacing fund, which had a change order that appeared. These will all be returned on receipt of revenue funds, temporary advances. And then, thirdly, the appropriation revisions that are noted, the two large items, $3 million of increase to cover the advances as mentioned earlier, and the other large item is the second distribution to record 1.742 million of CARES Act money that we are allocating towards our safety and forces in the month of November. So I would recommend approval of the entire order. Thank you.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordnance number 20-0-085 has been approved. Ordnance number 20-0-086.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to submit construction engineering services documents to the Ohio Department of Transportation and enter into a construction engineering services contract with Greenman Peterson, Inc., for the Lake Hopkins Road resurfacing project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council has already approved the contract for the Hopkins Road construction, and will obviously take place next season, early on next season. And we will ask Mr. Swigger to talk to you a little about oversight through... Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. As a condition of using federal funding for construction, engineering, and management services, the city was required to follow a qualification-based selection, QBS process, for consultant selection. It involved advertising on the high department transportation website for the services, and in doing so, we received eight responses from consultants. Based upon the consultant selection rating form provided by ODOT, we ranked the consultants in the order as listed in the staff report. The ranking took into account the firm's project manager, the strength and experience of the assigned staff, the firm's current workload, consultant's past performance, and their project approach. Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, or GPI, was selected as the highest ranked from the applicants. City has subsequently received a scope of services and fee document from Greenman Peterson for review and approval. As part of the QBS process, the city was required to select a consultant based on qualifications and subsequently agree or negotiate a contract price. The estimated fee submitted by Greenman Peterson for construction management services was $95,278.36. This will be billed on an hourly basis and not be exceeded without prior written authorization. It is anticipated that all of the construction, engineering, and inspection costs will be covered by federal funding and the Ohio Public Works Commission funds. A review of the letter of interest and scope of service document and fee estimate from Greenman Peterson has been performed. Scope document addresses all of the city's requirements. Also, the estimated construction engineering fee falls within the expected fee amount for a project of this scope. Greenman Peterson, Incorporated possesses the proper experience and qualifications necessary to perform this work. Therefore, it's recommended that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction engineering services agreement with Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, the amount not to exceed $95,278.36. Upon council approval, the legislation of the Greenman Peterson scope document and the fee estimate will then be forwarded to ODOT, ODOT's Office of Contract or Consultant Services, for final preparation of the city of Mentor consultant agreement to be executed by both parties. It's recommended the legislation be approved to let the project move forward in the spring of 2021 with completion in June of 2021. Thank you.
Mr. President, just one small item. If council is inclined to adopt this act on this this evening, the third whereas on the ordinance makes a reference to quality control inspection as the council's recommendation. If that could be struck and replaced with Greenman Peterson?
It's already been corrected.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordnance number 20-0-085 has been approved. Ordnance number 20-0-086.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to submit construction engineering services documents to the Ohio Department of Transportation and enter into a construction engineering services contract with Greenman Peterson, Inc., for the Lake Hopkins Road resurfacing project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council has already approved the contract for the Hopkins Road construction, and will obviously take place next season, early on next season. And we will ask Mr. Swigger to talk to you a little about oversight through... Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. As a condition of using federal funding for construction, engineering, and management services, the city was required to follow a qualification-based selection, QBS process, for consultant selection. It involved advertising on the high department transportation website for the services, and in doing so, we received eight responses from consultants. Based upon the consultant selection rating form provided by ODOT, we ranked the consultants in the order as listed in the staff report. The ranking took into account the firm's project manager, the strength and experience of the assigned staff, the firm's current workload, consultant's past performance, and their project approach. Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, or GPI, was selected as the highest ranked from the applicants. City has subsequently received a scope of services and fee document from Greenman Peterson for review and approval. As part of the QBS process, the city was required to select a consultant based on qualifications and subsequently agree or negotiate a contract price. The estimated fee submitted by Greenman Peterson for construction management services was $95,278.36. This will be billed on an hourly basis and not be exceeded without prior written authorization. It is anticipated that all of the construction, engineering, and inspection costs will be covered by federal funding and the Ohio Public Works Commission funds. A review of the letter of interest and scope of service document and fee estimate from Greenman Peterson has been performed. Scope document addresses all of the city's requirements. Also, the estimated construction engineering fee falls within the expected fee amount for a project of this scope. Greenman Peterson, Incorporated possesses the proper experience and qualifications necessary to perform this work. Therefore, it's recommended that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction engineering services agreement with Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, the amount not to exceed $95,278.36. Upon council approval, the legislation of the Greenman Peterson scope document and the fee estimate will then be forwarded to ODOT, ODOT's Office of Contract or Consultant Services, for final preparation of the city of Mentor consultant agreement to be executed by both parties. It's recommended the legislation be approved to let the project move forward in the spring of 2021 with completion in June of 2021. Thank you.
Mr. President, just one small item. If council is inclined to adopt this act on this this evening, the third whereas on the ordinance makes a reference to quality control inspection as the council's recommendation. If that could be struck and replaced with Greenman Peterson?
It's already been corrected.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordnance number 20-0-086 has been... has received its first reading. Ordnance number 20-0-088.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with Uptown Mentor LLC for the construction and exemption from taxation of improvements to certain blighted parcels of real property, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. And I think I'll make a few opening comments, and I'll let Mr. Malicek and Mr. Zeeman do as well. This project before you, we had the opportunity to discuss at some length in our last work session. I think it's an exciting proposal, it's an exciting opportunity to see some creative investment in a blighted area of our old village. We have worked very closely with the developers and their representatives to work on a project that I think council can be proud of if it proceeds forward as it's being represented. I know that council has weighed in very heavily and asked a lot of questions on this project. I know Mr. Zeeman and I and Mr. Malicek have spent many, many hours working with the developers on bringing you an agreement that we think can move forward and provide some level of expectation for both council and the public, consistent with what is being asked of you. This development agreement provides for some tax abatement over a 30-year period, consistent with similar terms we've done, using tax increment financing on project assistance. And there's a lot of details in here. I know you have some questions. We do have representatives of the project on with us, but I'm going to ask Mr. Malicek to make a few comments about the substance of the project and anything else you may wish to add.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Yes, this project should be something that is welcomed not only by the city council but also by the citizens of the city of Mentor. We're all very familiar, unfortunately, with what I would call the dilapidated buildings that are at the eastern end of the old village area. And the project developers here have proposed a 40,000-square-foot mixed-use office building that would provide some Class A office space to prospective tenants that would be coming to the area. There's also the possibility of restaurant/retail on the first floor. They've really put together a stellar design here that would fundamentally change for the better that entire area of the old village that's at the east end of the old village there. And it's an area that we've directed attention to in the past. As I think council is aware, we've reached out to the current property owners numerous times to try to get them in compliance with property maintenance and so forth. So this is definitely something from an economic development perspective that is very much welcomed and encouraged, and looking forward to having this project move forward.
To what I would add to that is, again, the development agreement in front of you, I think hits a few key points for what council was after on here. There are significant commitments to providing architectural standards and finished material requirements that council has looked to for the other... among other high-quality projects in our community. It provides certain limitations, certain commitment to, as Mr. Malicek mentioned, predominance of Class A office space in the community, something that we have been aspiring to see more of develop in our community. It does provide some limitations on the type of retail establishments that can settle here. It does provide some voluntary limits on some of the currently permitted uses in the zoning district, and commits essentially to architectural design very similar to what you see visualized in the agreement. So that's kind of the broad strokes of it. Mr. Zeeman may want to comment further, because I know he has spent a great deal of time on this as well.
Perhaps not at this time, but in response to more specific questions, I would think that would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Counsel, it's open for discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
I just have one question. I'm looking forward to this. This is going to be a substantial upgrade to a blighted area. The only one question or concern that popped up in my reading of the language was permitted uses, and that the fast casual dining caught me a little bit in that. I'm hoping that we don't wind up in a situation where the market dictates that to fill a vacancy, we might wind up with something that's less desirable or that's already present in the city in a number of locations. So hopefully, when it is put in place, that there is a restaurant or type of restaurant that goes in there, it's more upscale rather than fast casual. Just a thought going forward.
And I can't speak on behalf of the developer. All I can... and they are here to speak for themselves if they'd like to address this, and I'm guessing from the looks of our screen here that they want to.
Yes.
What we can say is that we have... we've made it very clear that this would be one of the more critical issues that council would have an interest in now and will continue for the life of the project to have an interest in. With respect to the retail, the language in this agreement, as council has seen, says those types of businesses that are consistent with Class A mixed-use developments, such as luxury goods, boutique apparel, home goods, business products and supplies, medical use, et cetera. Less specific with respect to restaurants. So with council's permission?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Abdullah to unmute the Sikoras. And if you... once you have audio, if you would introduce yourselves and give us your address as well.
I am Alison Sikora. I am president of Uptown Mentor LLC, and my physical home address is 9260 Kathleen Drive here in Mentor. And if you want to introduce yourself?
Mike Sikora, Alison's husband and counsel for the developer. I have a law firm and title agency that does legal work and title work for developers on projects of significance all throughout the state of Ohio.
And you also reside at the same address?
Yes. I do, yes. I haven't kicked him out yet. No, I'm joking. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak to council. We appreciate you taking the time to let us speak tonight and also working with us on this very exciting development. I heard your question, Mr. Kirchner, and to address it, fast casual is not fast food. It is... however, it's not necessarily fast dining. It's what most restaurants are nowadays. A Panera falls under a fast casual. I don't know if you've ever heard of Piata. That's another very nice... it's not a fast food. It's just something where someone can go in and grab a lunch or a dinner, and they're not sitting down with tuxedos or anything that would take hours to do. It's the most common type of dining available today. It's actually a common use and phrase in the restaurant industry. I don't know if there's any more you can add to that to help explain my... Well, I think it was important as well, just in negotiating the development agreement, to make sure that Alison had the flexibility to be able to line up tenants, because the retail and restaurant market is going through a great deal of strife overall right now in the COVID world that we're living in. And it's changing. It was changing a little bit before COVID, and it will change as we pull through COVID. So to make sure that she had the flexibility, as that market evolves and changes, to be able to line up tenants that would be suitable for this development, that would be supportive of Class A office. Class A office workers often want fast casual dining as close as it can possibly be. And if they don't have to drive to a Panera or a restaurant like that, and they have it right there in their own building, it's a very attractive amenity to them. So that's the type of restaurant that we at least want to be open to. It's not necessarily the type of restaurant that is being targeted at the moment, but it is one that we want to make sure that Alison is able to pursue discussions with, particularly because of its general attractiveness to Class A office users.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Ordnance number 20-0-085 has been tabled. Managers report. Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. And we'd like to remind our public that auto thefts and break-ins are on the rise within our community, and so please remember to lock your car doors. We continue to see a number of break-ins for people, persons who leave them open, leave the keys in, and they're garage door openers, and these provide singular opportunity for thieves in our area. The holidays are upon us, and we want to remind our residents to shop locally whenever possible. 68 cents of every dollar spent locally stays local. We will be providing some additional information on our website very shortly about the community holiday lighting contest, so we ask our residents interested in that to please stay tuned. Public Works Department announces that this week is the week of December 7th will be the final week of the city's 2020 yard waste collection program. You can place up to 25 units at the Curb4 pickup. The annual Mentor Police Fila Cruiser event will be this Sunday, November 22nd, at the Giant Eagle on Tyler Boulevard at Center Street from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Non-perishable foods and monetary donations will be accepted there. The city, of course, is closely monitoring the increase in COVID cases throughout the region and has been maintaining close communications with the Health District as well as area hospitals. We just remind our residents that we prepare for the potential sharp increase in hospitalizations, which we are already seeing here in Lake County and throughout the region, to safely celebrate the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. Counsel, I think you're probably already aware, there was a press release today, and